If you'll all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, as we call to order, is the organization of the board for the next year, for 2020-21.
Beth, I'd like to make a nomination that you are the board president, that you become our board president. I'm basing this nomination on, first of all, your experience as vice president.
Can you hold on a minute?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make sure that's on.
Hello? Yes. Okay, based on your experience as vice president for many years at different times, and your knowledge of the district and its policies and procedures, as well as the relationships that you've built with personnel and patrons in the district, both through negotiations and then also just by being a part of the district for decades, I think you would be a very good candidate for this, and I hope that you will accept the nomination, and if so, I move that we elect you into the position for 2020, or 2021, you said.
I'll accept that position, but I'd also like to nominate Debbie as vice president. Do I have a second?
Did you ask her, did she second?
She seconded.
Okay.
And I accept.
So is there a further discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I personally disagree with this nomination. You know, we've had Jeff as the president for five years consistently, and no time did anybody else step up to choose to be the president for what reasons I don't know, where the opportunities were definitely there. And with the, I think it's time for a new face in the presidency, and though I do agree with some of the statements that Debbie made about Beth's contributions, the board, or excuse me, the district is not on a good path right now. Our test scores are below state average, which we have never been, we've always been at or better than the state average. We have some budget concerns, and it's just time for a new approach, a new outlook to things, and if we were to put Beth and Debbie into leadership, I don't think we'll see any change. You know, Beth endorsed Debbie during the election, which is kind of poor play, and candidates should not be endorsing each other during the election. It kind of puts their unbiased approach to problem solving on thin ice, and we have three other board members that were elected that didn't get an endorsement from Beth. So I think that for us to move forward and to start with new and to avoid the definition of insanity of doing the same things over and over again and expecting difficult results, I think we need new leadership. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
The one thing that, when I was going through the election process, that I heard over and over was that people wanted to see a change, and I can see some of the thoughts that John has brought to us, and I heard them over and over again. It's kind of a tough position to put, I think, myself in, being a new member, my first day on the board, to ask me to select a president, but I do know what the people want, the people want change, they don't want the status quo. And I, you know, I don't know your leadership capabilities, but I don't know anybody's leadership capabilities on this committee. That's my thought.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Michelle, I can't see out. So four to, alt against, say no.
Aye.
Aye.
Four to three, motion carries. The next thing is a hearing of the audience, we drew.
No.
No?
No. Approval.
I'm sorry.
How about the consent?
Right, you're right, John. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Do I need to leave the nomination?
Yes. I also want to say a special thank you to Westside Family Church, who donated $5,000 to the school district, with $1,000 for each building, to be spent at the discretion of the principal, as well as the high school car wash, I'm sorry, my computer is.
Is it right here?
The high school, the high school $50 for the car wash donation to the high school band, the $452.10 for the Java Jazz donation to the high school band, $55 to the onstage online ticket sales for the musical Chicago, donated to the high school musical theater, $3,000, Chrysler's Test Drive Event next incorporated in the donation to the high school boys football, AAA Satellite LLC, $400 donation to the high school powerlifting We appreciate all of our community businesses and organizations that donate to our schools.
This list is getting longer.
This list is getting a lot longer. Now we're at the hearing of the audience at 3:01.
Mr. Dalby, can you hear me? Okay, thanks. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chip Burcher. For about 15 years, I've had a child in Lansing School District, 11 of those in Lansing High School. And I'm here talking with you tonight because my daughter Catherine Kate is a senior at Lansing High School, and she got to the point where she's asked me to speak on her behalf. For 15 years, 11 years of Lansing High School, we've taught our children to problem solve for themselves, to advocate for themselves. But unfortunately, we got to the point where Kate felt that she no longer had an advocate at Lansing High School, and she asked me to come here. She may come in, in her spare time, besides being the Lansing High School student body president, and a member of the National Honor Society, and a forensicator, and everything else that goes with being a high school senior. She dances, she's in a pre-professional ballet program, where she dances 30 hours a week, sometimes minimum six, usually seven days a week, preparing for post-secondary education. I shared a memorandum with each of you that outlines the issues, some of the background information, and what we asked of Lansing High School. I don't think our requests were unreasonable, but I have to say that I was rather disappointed. This is not how I wanted to lead Lansing High School. After 11 years in the high school, 15 years in the district, it was just kind of disappointing. And you know what Mr. Robinson had to say, and Mr. Dalby had to say, about the vision of Lansing High School? The response I received, and then Kate received from talking with Mr. Catherine and Mr. McKim, and then I received from talking with Mr. McKim, and talking with Mr. West, was rather anachronistic. It was looking backwards instead of forwards. It was dealing with the status quo, instead of finding ways to take care of students, to go outside of the box, to give students the opportunity to excel. Kate isn't looking for an easy pass, she's not looking to get out of anything, she's actually looking to add something. And she's looking to ensure that her future scholarship needs are not disadvantaged by a decision. I've given you all the memorandum that outlines everything, as long as, as well as what I believe are viable solutions, that I'm asking you to consider and to intervene on our daughter's I'd welcome the opportunity to discuss this in private. Our daughter is under an IEP that I believe the school has not held up to its end of the bargain. And with that, I open myself to questions, or to wait till we're in a more comfortable discussion forum.
I certainly understand your concerns, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, having been the parent of a gifted child also. This is something I think we need to take back to executive sessions of board and discuss, because it does not impact only your daughter, and so we need to be able to discuss it as a whole and as the whole student body. I don't want you to feel like we're not listening, or that we're not paying attention, but we need to be able to discuss it in a forum in which we can discuss with all the student effects, because it's kind of like dominoes. So if you wouldn't mind letting us have that opportunity, I would appreciate it very much.
I will. I absolutely don't mind, that's really what I think is what we're hoping to hear. My wife and I were talking about this coming, and we understand that because of the legalities of what we talked about with the IEP, and that we did expect it to go to executive session. I'll stick around if you have questions, and me, I would be willing to answer any discussions, or pick up where Mr. West and I left the last conversation, which was less than satisfactory.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Can we think there would be a bad, how to take this for you to spend a few minutes with the board in executive session, to give them a chance to ask you some questions, or for you to share some of those more personal details, and then be excused, and then continue the discussion?
I do. I actually think it would be disingenuous for the board not to have that opportunity.
Again, why move that Chip Burcher be allowed to participate in executive session for the purpose of information finding on his daughter Kate Burcher, and only that can be the excuse to like the board's decision?
Actually, John, we don't need a motion to be able to do that.
Just invite him in.
We just need to be able to invite him in as, after we've had a chance to catch up, and then we have the ability to just invite him in.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time, and your service.
If it's, everyone had a chance to look at the reports? Dan, do you have anything on finance that you'd like to add?
No, nothing at this time. Danielle and I have been working this last week on some of the projections and some of the next years that we'll have for you at the next meeting, probably in a couple weeks, at the end of the week report, so.
Item 5.1, has everyone read the report?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions? 6.1, has everyone read the reports? Item 7, we need to establish regular board meetings for this coming year. For the last many, many years, we've met on the second Monday of the month at 7:00 p.m. Is that something that we would like to continue to do on Monday evenings?
I would say yes, since it's been traditional.
You don't have a problem with?
I move that we continue our regular board meeting to be the second Monday of each month, in the board office at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
I have a motion to second, any discussion?
I have a question. So are these dates listed? Do they take the holidays and stuff into consideration, or do we have to rearrange it a little bit at some point? I don't know.
Those aren't taken into consideration.
They are.
Because that's a date, it's not, that's all we have to worry about.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next policy is one that is recommended by KASB, and as I sent out kind of in our notes, it's not something that we do anymore, is the investment of funds in this manner. But if we, if we end up wanting to invest funds in this manner, that it would be something that we would follow, so I believe it's good that we go ahead and, and we accept this policy recommended from KASB as presented. Like I said, it's not something that we do, but it's, it's something that if we end up having some additional funds in order to invest in that manner, that we would do it in this manner, so.
I move that we approve this policy as presented.
Second.
I have a motion to second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. And then, one of the things that we have done, one of the things we've done in the past is had board, a board retreat or a board work session, and one of the things, I'm on 7:30, but. Are you?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got ahead of Dan again. Go ahead.
Sticking some of my thunder here, Jimmy and I had worked, and I had sent this out in a end of the week report about possibly doing some bus replacement schedule, something we haven't done as a board and as an administration of for quite a while, actually, is to set up some of these schedules. These are plans at best, and, but I think it's important for you all to see them, and for us to kind of plan ahead, just a little bit as John and I when we were at KASB, and you get to see all the fancy buses rolling out there, and we have worked traditionally with Thomas Buses, which is locally in Bonner Springs, it's part of the King K group, and we do have a representative that we've worked with in the past down there, he finds us good deals, and we spend some of our money with them. So one thing I would like us to look at is this bus rotation schedule, and I've wanted an opportunity for you to see it before I come back and ask you to spend some money, hopefully in next month. Part of this process for, for all of us is, we also have, you have to give us approval to go out to bid, and so as a part of this, at the end, I would like us, for you to give me approval, to also let some bids on this process. There's a few interesting parts as, as the bus world, that as you dig in, you learn more than you ever thought you'd know about buses. I did want to mention a couple things, as you look at the years, one thing that we, we are going to try to do, our bus, our average age of our bus is around 10 years old, upwards of 11, and that is a concern for us, I believe, as a district. Buses last around 15 years, you can usually get about that out of them, but that means that we have some that are getting up in age. But as you notice, we have some 2011s that we would like to get rid of first, and so I think that that's, it's well worth our conversation. And I added a note down here, and the reason we're looking at trading in the 2011 buses first has to do with their reliability. Jimmy believes that when we bought them, that quite possibly, somebody knew that the Mercedes engines inside of there were going to a struggle with the emission standards that were, were laid on top of that in 2011, and that engine just didn't work very well with the, with the, with the emission standards that were put in place. Every time that we have to replace one of the filters on those buses, it's a $2,000 to Jimmy's worked on ways to be able to clean those out, he believes he has one, but he's, he doesn't feel comfortable sending these buses on long trips, and I think that that's, that's a concern.
I got a question on that. Why?
Why were they purchased?
No, no, no. Does he fail, does he feel that it won't run? Because as right now, the state of Kansas does not have emission standards. We don't have any type of emission standards, and I don't see anything in the next 10 to 15 years before they start cranking on us.
I, I believe that it's some of his concern, and I can, I can answer that question through, with Jimmy more, and I'll write that down, is to follow up in an end of the week, but I believe there are some issues with us changing some of those. For example, what was on the bus is, I believe, something that they recommend that you leave on the bus for that emission standards. I believe there are ways around it, none of us are really comfortable with doing those ways around it. He's currently looking at actually cleaning the filters ourselves, he's had relative success with that, however, he's, he's, no transportation director likes the phone call that you have a bus on I-70 and kids headed to Salina, and it's just something that, that he doesn't feel comfortable with. This is a plan at best, and if, if we find out that what he's doing actually with cleaning those is working better, we would bump some of those 2002s and 2005s that you see in year two, up, up higher, and, and this is a plan.
So, my question to this is, have we set forth a depreciation scale for any of our equipment? Not just busing, but also like maintenance vehicles, tractors, janitorial or maintenance high dollar equipment like that? Have we researched at all a depreciation scale on exiting these items before they become literally a money pit?
That's not something that we've done as a, as a board, and that's part of the reason that we want to get to, to these rotation schedules. We have, we have typically tried, as a district, I believe, when I was sitting out there for many, many years, is that we would replace it when we needed to, and that works well for a while, but you also get behind when you don't stay on top of that. And I think for us as a district moving forward, this is definitely something that would, would help with some of the questions that have come up over the years, about why haven't we replaced a fleet vehicle? And I think it would be an excellent opportunity for us to work together on that, something that Jimmy and I, Jimmy was really excited about it, I'm more than willing to do the work on that, and, and it's just something that I think is time. But the answer to that is, it's not something we've looked at. A big part of that, go ahead, John, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just think more of a statement than anything, just I want to Aaron, I, I think this is a great product, I appreciate Jimmy's hard work to see himself and to see his fleet, and to kind of look out the aging of it, and I think that's exactly what Aaron's talking about as far as looking at all of our expendable high dollar items, so this can probably be the standard for the rest of the staff that deals with that to follow on. I do ask that, when you do come asking for money, please do it in the effect that it has on other things, do not just stand alone, X amount of buses are going to cost us $150,000, please show us how that $150,000 had an effect on curriculum and facilities maintenance and payroll or what have you, so we can look at it in the aggregate, not just in the scope type. Thank you.
Sure.
Dan, this money would come out of capital outlay, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, any, any purchase like this does come out of capital outlay, and we can lay out those, those projects we have, we have had, and we looked at it this, this morning, actually, you know, some of, some of this money, and John, it'll really be next, next month when I come back to you, but just on a, on a conversation piece, the capital outlay expenditures that this would, would take replace of, that we spent this year, would be some of our, our intermediate school playground equipment that we, that we spent about $60,000 on, and there were some other expenditures, I don't know off the top of my head. As for, as for the conversation of, of what that takes place of, we are working on a, on a capital outlay plan, and, and we can try to bring that back at the same time, of our larger expenditures, our capital expenditures, that we can look at. So obviously, every dollar that you spend on a bus, you're not going to spend on, on another project, if that be baseball lights, if that be any other major improvement, band instruments that Aaron and I have talked about a few times, all of that, so.
Well, as a, as a fellow bus owner driver, of one bus, not 20 some, I think this has been a few years coming. I agree with that, because just being neighbors, Jimmy and I have had conversations about that. I know I sat in on a meeting about the buses when we made the change for it to come to the district instead of leasing them out, and the big piece of that was, you know, saving money. So I know we spend a lot of money every month maintaining or repairing a lot of these buses. And then the other one was just having control over our students' safety. And no, it isn't fun when your bus breaks down on the side of the road, and you've got numerous students on it to keep safe in all kinds of weather, so I think that this just needs to be a standard budget item every year, and, because if we're not proactive in it, reactive, if something breaks down, I think sometimes it's hard for him to find the right bus in the right moment, you know, if something isn't running, so.
I think we need to buy a new one every year. And when you guys approved to take over the buses, that should have been right then, because we're 10 years in, and now you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you're, when I talk to the guy down there, you're around the $85,000 or whatever, I mean, we should have been buying buses day one.
I, I don't disagree, and that's one reason that I think if we set up a depreciation scale on our, our fleet vehicles, on our maintenance vehicles, on our large ticket items, that would help prevent a knee jerk reaction of a large expenditure, because you know you're setting aside every month, every year, a little bit to make your expenditures.
And we've talked about that with our planning on whatever the case might be, this is buses, you know, but other things such as HVAC or whatever, you know, trying to project out, you know, what the need is, and, and do it accordingly. And when, when they approved the buses for the district, I didn't sort of call the board at the time, but the plan was, we're going to buy these different ages of buses, and then we're going to stagger it to replace, and Jimmy has replaced a few, but I think a lot of times it's been more of a reactive situation than proactive, so I think it's more than time.
One of the things that John mentioned, and, and this would be a board discussion, I believe, is, is buying one new, one new bus at about $85,000. What I have on, on our bus replacement schedule, and it's something that our representative, Jeremy from Midwest Bus Sales, says that many people do do, is, but it's totally and absolutely a discussion for you, and I can have him bid different things, is, is to take a bus off of a three-year lease return. You save about $20,000 on a three-year lease return, you can get one of those buses for around $65,000 instead of $85,000. And he said those lease returns work no different than you do for, for an automobile. They, they go through the same rigid, if you've ever leased a car, the bus we would be buying is that, is that car that someone turned in on lease. You save about $20,000. For me, I believe that with our current needs, possibly with growth- For me, I believe that with our current needs, possibly with growth, depending on, on some other conversations, and we'll kind of talk about that under our next agenda item, I believe, but with our current needs and our current age, in order to lower that and in order to replace some of the buses that we have, we have had issues with over the years, my recommendation would be to buy one off of a, off of a three-year lease and a couple of, of about four-year-old used buses. That's only one more year than a three-year lease, but we would, we would end up getting approximately four buses for $150,000 instead of one new bus for, for $90,000. And I think it would allow us, at least in, in the short term, two to three years, to lower that age and to get rid of some of the buses that we've had issues with. And also some of these, if you look in year three, you have some 2005s that are starting to, to get up there in age. And it would allow us to replace those sooner rather than, if you only do one bus a year, it would be the case that it would, it would take you 30 years to replace all of your buses. And we, we can't live with that at that point in time. Possibly a, a good solution could be, if you took two off of the lease return, you'd spend about $130,000 and, and have Jimmy find a, a better used bus. Those are out there. And Jimmy's found some good ones. Jimmy's a bargain shopper at some point in time, and, and he has saved us a lot of money. But it is also, it's, it's difficult to find sometimes, no different than you're buying a used car. If you get up too many years, you run into issues, so. I can definitely bring that back though, John, from, from Jeremy, and that can be a discussion. The reason it's kind of important to do now, and, is because those lease returns are coming back, and he'll have the list in the next month. And so if we make that decision at our next board meeting, we would be able to pick the ones that we want. If we wait, and then we don't actually pay for that until we take ownership in July. If we don't do that, we would, we would end up getting the, the ending lease return buses that would have higher mileage, so. But I, I will definitely add that, John, on, on asking for a, a new bus versus, he'd be more than willing to sell us a new bus. The other part of that also becomes, is there are different buses out there. They're all about the same cost. And so one of the things that we do, we do have to take this out for bid, since it's over $20,000. Jimmy would much prefer that that stay in the Thomas world, and there, there are ways that, that when you ask for a bid, there are ways for you to be able to purchase a Thomas bus. The buses, for, for the most part, are all about the same cost. The biggest thing when we stay with a Thomas bus is interchangeable, they're easier, we, we have people that know how to work on them. And the nice thing is, is that they are just right down the street at K-7, so. That is one thing to keep in mind. I, I will, I'm sure I will get bids from Bluebird and, and from all the other bus companies, and I'll bring those, and if that's a decision, when we bid those, it's comparable. But ultimately, there are certain specs on a Thomas bus that if, if we want to stay with Thomas buses, we would be able to stay with Thomas buses, so. Any other questions?
Yeah, am I correct in thinking that you can't drive a school bus that's over 20 years old with the school district?
Twenty-five.
It's, yeah, it's 25.
Twenty-five.
That was brought up in one of those things. No school district. Now, private can, but no school district.
Okay, I thought it was.
And it's from manufacturer date, not, not when you bought it, or you, yeah?
And I can speak to Midwest Bus Sales, not just from personal experience, but also in talking to other districts who've dealt with them, and they've had very positive experiences, so moving forward, you can keep that in mind.
They have a very nice new office space down on K-7 that we got to visit the other day also, that they're looking, they're the ones looking to partner with KCK and the local school districts on their diesel mechanics, so. This is, this is mainly, I, I would like a, a motion to allow me to let bids, if, if I can get that.
I move that we allow the superintendent to gather bids for the bus replacement schedule.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Real quick, so are you, what are you looking at, new and leased thing?
I, I will, I will bring a, I'll bring new and the three-year lease and used to you.
Do you know on the three-year lease, is that, are all three-year leases $65,000 regardless of miles, or is it fluctuating?
It, it does fluctuate.
Okay, it's not a set fee?
No.
Okay.
No, it's a, that's a ballpark, yeah. It's no different than the $30,000 and $40,000 for a four to six-year. He said that's a good ballpark, just for your budgetary reasons. The, the main thing about working early is, is that, and he said typically, the, the main thing is, is the lower mileage. And, and where they're from. He, he tries really hard. They have a lot in Oklahoma that they deal with, they have a lot in Chicago that they deal with, and they'd much rather sell us the bus from Oklahoma than they would from, that have, you know, dealt with the, the cold winters in Chicago, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Sorry, John, you're on a little bit of a delay.
Okay.
Now, I wanted to talk about the work sessions. And what we've done in the past is, we've had a board retreat usually in October, around that time where we've sat and we've really looked into something, either worked on our tenure plan, or we have worked on a specific area where we thought we were kind of weak. And the question, I guess this time, is do we want to do work sessions where there are specific areas that we work to address, to learn more, to learn better how to work with as a board? Would we rather do a retreat where it's just one day? Or would we rather do work sessions throughout the year?
I would agree with that, throughout the year.
Throughout the year?
I like that one, too.
I do.
And I think especially, you know, getting started on it fairly soon, so that the new members can get up to speed on whatever it is that we think the topic might need to be, just kind of rather than wait.
I think so. I like doing the work sessions. I think we get a lot more out of them than we do spending just one Saturday looking at a particular topic. I think the board benefits far more from it. Normally, what we've been doing in October as well is doing the board eval, the board's self-eval. And so, as we start this off, do we want to continue to do that? I think October's a good time to do that, because we've got two brand-new board members who haven't had a chance to even figure out what's going on yet. October gives them 10 months to develop an opinion, to develop some ideas, and to be able to bring some of those things to the table. How do you?
I'm sorry, Beth, I couldn't hear the last person speaking. Is the question, would we rather do them semi-regularly or, or in October, or a combination thereof? I don't understand. What's the question, please?
The question is, would we rather do one board retreat or have several work sessions throughout the year?
Okay. Thank you. I vote for multiple throughout the year. You know, John and I have talked to several different board members from other boards, and many of the boards have two meetings a month as, as common, and they do their second meeting to do work sessions. And I agree with, I think those of you guys have said something, that, you know, you can get the item that's hot at that time, you know, maybe the negotiations, work session happens before negotiations happens. I'm not sure what you guys did in October in the past, before the two years before I got here, but I agree, just spreading it out throughout the year makes more sense.
For a while, we were.
Yeah, Dumbo, too.
For a while, we were spending a lot of time building buildings. And that was taking up the lion's share of our time. In order to set that in place, can everybody submit to Dan, I'm going to have you email Dan, a list of like three things that are most important to you, that you think we need to work on the most? And then we'll, we'll go through those, we'll prioritize them, and we'll set up dates to work on those.
Are you, are you thinking how often? I mean, like a quarterly-type situation, or more often?
Maybe every other month.
Every other month?
I think some of it would, would, would depend on when it is timely. If, if we're going to look at, for, for example, negotiations, I think you would want that possibly the month before, before we would discuss that here. If there are policies, the, the large policy book, before we, before we approve that, you know, maybe the month before, just so the board's more informed on some of the decisions. Handbooks are an excellent opportunity to look at those. You know, we usually approve those in July.
Keeping in mind, too, that we're looking at policy issues.
Yeah.
Not day-to-day practice issues, but policy issues.
Well, and I think also budget.
Mm-hmm, and budget.
Excellent.
It's a huge one, you know, for everybody, as we're starting to talk about, you know, maybe next month, with your information you're going to give to us, you know, figuring out buses, those kinds of things.
Is everybody good with sending three topics that they think are high priority to Dan?
Yep.
And then we'll sort out and go from there. I move that we go to executive session to discuss individual employees' performance and personnel changes pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma. And the open meeting will resume in the board meeting at?
Need about 15 minutes.
15 minutes. At about five minutes to eight. We have 8.1. I move that we accept the resignation of Melinda Landry, school psychologist, and Mary Hill, special ed teacher.
Second?
Four.
Do we need a second here?
There's one more in there. Are you doing them separate?
I don't know.
There were, she did Melinda Landry and Mary Hill.
There are two resignations and then an appointment.
Okay, are we doing all together or separate?
We can, we can do them together.
I was going to do them separate.
Either way.
I move that we accept the resignation of Melinda Landry, school psychologist, and Mary Hill, special ed teacher, as well as the appointment of Johnny Bryce as the high school assistant drama teacher.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Same.
Are there any topics that we want to talk about for future board meetings?
Are we going to put the work session discussion on the agenda again next month after we get some feedback?
Yep.
Yes, and remember, everybody's going to give Dan their top three things that they would like to work on in a work session.
I'd like to make a.
Beth, I have a few questions or comments, please.
Okay.
For item number nine, information I own and announcements, just a couple of questions. Has there been a timeline established yet for the hiring of the new lengthy elementary school principal?
We're looking at doing that after we hire superintendent. And so the, the elementary school closes January 31st, and then whenever you set your schedule for, for your interviews and for that decision on the superintendent, we will, approximately a week after that, we'll go through the process of hiring a elementary school principal. We'll, I'll be, I can, I can send that out, kind of what our plan is on that. We'll follow a lot like we did with the high school, where we'll have administrator input, we'll have teacher input into, into that hiring process.
Okay, very good. Was there a safety coordinator in form, or did I miss it?
There was not, and on the consent agenda, we approved Kevin McCarley as our new safety coordinator.
Okay, so, very good, David took a knee. Do you have any updates on the pre-ACG that was taken last year?
I believe Holly had.
Of course, how did?
I believe Holly responded that we had not gotten those yet. I can have her check, and, and I can include that in one of my end-of-the-week reports. They, they actually haven't given those, those scores to the schools at this point in time. It was the last time I had that conversation with her.
Okay. Yeah, I just saw, I, I think some social media was talking to the students about it, so I assume that you guys had it. So, yeah, I guess that's a good transition for next board meeting. So, some things that I'd like to recommend for next board meeting, if we could hear from Kerry how the new middle school cell phone policy is working, I'm interested to hear about that, as, as well as how the camp kindergarten went over. And with the winter PCS removing season, if we had any effects on class sizes, that'd be interesting to note. And I'm probably interested in that in every January, as, as people come and go over the winter. And Debbie, if you have some time, I'd appreciate it to hear from you on what the anti-bullying task force is, is doing. I think it's great that we have you on that team, and if we could just kind of hear what's going on from those guys, it'd be great.
I think there was reports sent out.
And if we could get a, they know what the plan is for the, in employee childcare, I know you've been working on that with Sonia Alvan, so if you could get a, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one motion that, at the next meeting, if we could reopen allowing someone to call in during the executive session. We have a new board, and I think that, that maybe we can do some further discussion on that.
We'll talk about it.
I'd like to put it on the agenda, if we could.
Need four to put it on.
Need four to put it on.
Three, three to put it on.
I'd second, I'd second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, or are there two others that, that support that?
Actually, I think you're.
May need four board members to put it on.
So do we vote?
I'm sorry, will we have a motion on, please?
Go ahead. He can hear you better.
To open up the executive session for call-in.
Oh, okay.
Executive session.
We need four board members to support that motion, to put it on the agenda.
We don't have to pass a, a motion to put items on the agenda.
You have to have four board.
I think three.
Is it three?
It's three board members.
You have to have three board members to put it on the agenda.
Or, or the president, or the president can put it on the agenda.
Yeah. An agenda is not even required for a board meeting, it's just a tool to be used to manage time, which is the public informed, so.
Thank you.
It's not required that we pass a motion to put items on the agenda.
No, but we don't have three board members in support of it, John. We're not going to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Is it three or four?
It's three.
Three.
Do we have, we have two. Who are we missing?
John. John can say he wants it.
John, I would assume you, you would want that?
Absolutely.
So there's your third.
Okay, there's a third, it'll be on the agenda next month. Are there any others? In that case, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I will not be here Wednesday.